You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the September 8th meeting for the Kingsford Heights Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county dot org.
Meeting will now come to a quarter. Please silence your cell phones. Join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, we have five town council members, the attorney, the clerk treasurer, we're good. Departmental report, please department.
Good evening, everybody.
Yes, good evening. I know it's going to fall.
During August, we had 28 calls for service. Took five reports. We assisted with the back to school bash, which was a really good event. A lot of kids were there. We also participated with fireworks at the hog days with the American Legion, which was also very good. Since advertising the open positions for the department, we've received over a thousand views on our Facebook webpage and received over 10 plus applicants. Anna's currently conducting the background checks on those, doing interviews and follow-ups. On completion, we will present our best choice that we intend to hire for the position deputy marshal to the council. That's all I have at the moment.
Do you want to see them all?
Yes.
We'd like to see them all, whatever you get.
The applications.
Yeah, you'll receive, well, what we'll do is with regards to deputy marshals, we'll we'll have a hiring list from one to 10. Regardless of the marshals, well, same thing, we'll get a marshal to use since you guys hired the marshals. And then deputy marshals, what we'll give you what we would like to do.
We still don't know if we can afford a full-time one yet or not, but that meeting is later this week.
Okay.
And I think Joe wanted to request an executive session to do a job performance evaluation. Joe?
Yeah.
Anna, he wanted to do a job performance.
No, I want to do, well, the marshals are going to have to come in, Jeff's going to come in.
Yeah, he won't, but it's.
So that on me?
Just all around, just everything, no problem.
Never heard of that before, that you would actually have. Or we would.
I mean, if there's issues?
Never done before.
Well, we don't really know if there's issues, we just want to speak to you.
Okay.
Give some ideas of what's going on, what's going to happen when you do leave and what we can look forward to and what we'd like to have happen ourselves.
Absolutely. I'm a 504 grade in a row every day, so we're welcome to stop in and talk to you.
Do I need to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I need to pick a date and time.
I'd like to make a motion that we could get a job performance evaluation from the town marshal.
Is it from the town marshal or from the?
Well, he's the one that's going to have to answer for it, he's a marshal.
You don't even need a motion, you just need to schedule the date.
Okay. Calendar, oh, that was my photo.
Can I ask a question? If it's executive session, isn't there like 15 categories that has to be done through and posted?
Right. That's one of the categories.
Employee review or something like it.
Yeah. Joby back, which can be validated for that.
It has to be at the town hall.
It has to be at the town hall.
Can we get it in sometime this week, like Thursday maybe or something? We've got to post it for three days anyway.
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight.
How about next Monday? I got. I can't read my own calendar. Oh, there we go.
That would be the sixth or the fifteenth?
Next Monday or Wednesday, thorn doctor's appointments. I'm sorry.
This is through Monday.
Monday, I won't be able to do that.
Could you go on Wednesday?
Wednesday is Monday.
Could you go on Wednesday?
Yeah.
Wednesday. Wednesday is the 17th. Wednesday, 9/17. And what time? I get off at 3:00. So I'd be home at 3:30 then?
Yeah.
And is this just with me or is this with me and Anna?
Well, it's just you because you're the marshal, I mean, we just need to know what's going on, what's happening with when you, what's going to go on and you know, some of the things that we need to look out for when we want to get ready to pick a new marshal or whatever we're going to do.
That's fine, I did, no problems with that.
Because it won't be very long after that, we're going to be deciding who we're going to, if we're going to pick a marshal and a deputy after that too, or deputy or marshal, so.
What time?
3:30?
Yeah. Lives into 17th at 3:30.
Now, can we also review applications at that point? Is that another, is that a valid reason?
Um, just that interviews and stuff, yes.
Okay, so we can do both of them at that point?
With regards, we've been conducting the deputy marshal interviews so far.
Okay, well, if you have a couple of applications you want us to look at, we can do that at the same time.
Yes. No problems. With regards to the marshals though, the marshals are, that's on you guys with regards to interviews.
Yeah, but you've certainly looked at them and have opinions.
Yes, yeah, I, no problem on any of them.
Okay. Anybody else have questions for Jeff?
I got one, but I think it's on the claims, something here too, so about the purchase of the.
Oh, the signs you said.
You just want to wait for that or what?
No, go ahead.
We've got a purchase here for two traffic signs and lights that you've got to hook up the caution lights.
Yes.
Were they donated to us or did we end up buying them?
No, I bought those with lid money.
All right, and because what we're seeing is there's a claim on it right now for the 1043, but also in July there was a claim for two. Now, did you buy two sets or just?
I bought two sets, so it was four total.
All right, that's all you know.
And it's come out to be like $499 a piece.
Yeah, there was a 1073, it's 1043. I didn't know, I just seen it twice, I didn't know if you got two sets or one.
No, we got two sets, and the reason why is because I have one here on Wayland and I have one on Meadowbrook, and it seems to be doing good with regards to alerting the drivers, the cars as far as it being 20 miles an hour.
Yes.
So I'm going to put two on Meadowbrook and two on Wayland.
In and out, in and out.
In and out, yep.
All right, I didn't know, I just seen it twice, but when was it July?
Yeah.
Last one we got.
So I initially bought two and then I just saw that they were forcing or working, so I figured I'd buy two more with the lid money.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here from the fire department?
Nope.
Nobody's here from the utilities. Do you have a park board report?
We have nothing to report at this time that I know of.
Moving right along, minutes.
Hey, can I ask about the park department?
Yeah.
When you had that meeting, did you guys ever talk about anything about the front of the building, anything you was talking about before? Because I remember somebody saying something about a couple of people from the council probably needed us to listen to. Did you guys ever talk about anything?
Uh, not about the, anybody waiting or getting.
The front fix or anything?
Apparel.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Getting appraisals for the building and stuff.
Okay. Minutes. Before anybody motions, please bear with me. On page two. In the first paragraph. There's four in favor, one nay by Evelyn Ballinger, motion carried. I like that. Then we get down to the next one in the same paragraph. There's three in favor, one nay, the nay is not identified, and that is only adds up to four people, but there was five people present. So there's something wrong with the count on that vote. There was either an abstention by somebody or the count is just wrong. And the nays need to be identified when it's not unanimous.
Who did it, who was the nail?
She's going to have to play the tape back and find out. Yeah, I don't remember. And I think there's one more place where it's sort of like that. On the next page. We didn't exactly tell Crystal there was not enough money to paint the community center, we told her it would wipe out that fund. And she asked, and we asked her to get alternative suggestions for fixing it. That was using the I believe, community center fund, and we also talked about she might have to organize a couple fundraisers to replenish that fund. Look for the name of the fund, but we didn't tell her, we just told her of the financial complications if she did do it. So the summary of the conversation is not truly accurate. Your fourth point under your report, I would like you to add that there's no special treatment for board members as we were, as we were discussing in regards to shut-off policy. That doesn't say what we were really talking about. We were discussing shut-offs and it makes us sound like, to me, if someone would just pick this up, it makes it sound like board members were asking for special favors, and that was not the case.
So that's just your personal opinion, correct?
That's, well, that's my opinion.
Okay, that's fine, that's your personal opinion.
But I would, I do think it should say regarding shut-offs, because that's what we were talking about. And on the, on the back page, there's another motion on the garbage contract where we have one nay, but the person's not identified. And on postage for late notices. You said council refused to charge customers for postage, which is not exactly what we said. We said that we felt the postage was already included in the operating costs of the utilities.
You said that you did charge enough in penalties, is what you said.
That's right, we said the charge was already covered by existing charges and we didn't think it was necessary to have another new charge.
So then you refused to charge the customers for postage?
Would you put in the reason why then? We just didn't flat out refuse, we gave you an explanation. I think the minutes need to reflect more fully what the intent was.
On this, on this one, we could probably just let her go ahead and correct it and just go ahead and pass it, then pass the minutes to the next meeting then.
Yes. I would like that, thank you.
So you're going to have a motion to table?
Yes.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we wait on the regular meeting for August 25th until it's corrected by the clerk.
And the next meeting date is the 22nd? Yeah.
Who seconded?
I'll second, Lori seconded. There's a motion and a second to table these minutes for corrections and changes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? I guess that's unanimous. Okay, on to claims. After I talked with you today, I talked to Randy about that one claim. All right, Randy said, yes, he did tell you that, but I explained to Randy the difference between appropriations and funds. And I said, Randy, that was a fund, I mean, an appropriation for hydrant rental that the town is supposed to pay to the water utility
Yes.
for hydrant rent, and that cannot be used for what you're saying. And I said, and actually, you shouldn't be using the appropriation list when you're looking for things until you narrow down what fund you're using, and then you can look at just the appropriation list for that fund. So Randy said, he apologized, and Randy said, you have, you have two choices for correcting that one claim, and that's the claim to right, Ferguson Water Works, 22,608, 96 for hydrants. And I asked him if those hydrants were for the subdivision development or if they were for the town's basic water utility. And he told me they're for the water utility, they're not for the subdivision. So you have, he has two choices and/or you have two choices of where that claim needs to be paid out of. Number one is just the water utility funds. And number two is there is a surplus of money in the ARPA money, and that qualifies as an ARPA expense. And so far, when Randy got the prices back on the ARPA things.
Yeah.
There's only an increase of $5,000 in the prices. And the covert is coming in lower than what we estimated.
Yes.
So it makes more sense to me to call it ARPA.
We do have the funds in the water department. Did the water department for that?
I didn't, I just talked to him late this afternoon.
Which shows water operating, there's 102,581. And that's $22,000 coming for the water, fire agents.
Well, since we need to spend that ARPA money, we don't want to have to give it back.
No.
I think we should pay it out of ARPA.
Yeah, yeah, I believe the funds are left in this water department, in the water department for us.
Good question. Were you using the ARPA money for the improvements at the water plant? Doesn't he have the tank cleaned and?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you still have plenty after that.
And then we've got, I think the only thing at the sewage plant was the one covert.
Yeah.
I know the intention originally was improvements at the sewage plant.
Yeah, it got turned around.
He didn't have the matching funds for what he thought he might need or something to use that money there, so we decided to go towards the water department.
So I've got a question, since you're on the utilities. As this town's growing and as the sewer water's coming in, the water walk money is coming in, excuse me, the sewer money and the water money. Is it being set aside in those funds so that when the time comes, when there needs to be an improvement, there's a balance that's set aside for that? I mean, the tax fees and the, you know, I know like on water, you haven't had to do new infrastructure and also there should be additional revenue coming in to build that account up, is that being put in the water account and being set aside for future? At least is that on the plan, I guess is what I'm trying to get at.
It is in our plan, because I think we're waiting for a little bit more from, a little bit more from Baker Tilly too, are we? To understand exactly.
Can you, can you get a report of what we've taken in in tax fees versus regular revenue? There should be tax fees on me.
I mean, I can do the simple math, you know, whatever the taxes are, and if we've done 100 homes, we multiply that times 100, that ought to be 150,000 somewhere.
Same thing with the waters that we've been moving?
I'm just looking down the road so that when the time comes, you know, that if we have to do an improvement to something, just like that ARPA money, you know, I heard about it needing to go to communities, and it's like, well, geez, Kingsford Heights, where it should go, and target come up with half a million bucks. So I want to make sure it gets spent wisely.
Wisely too.
Thank you.
That's our goal, is to get it broke down into every department so we know exactly what funds are in each one, but it's going to take us a little time here, but we're working that way though.
And Rosalie, you might be able to answer this. Sewer and water, in theory, by the state board of accounts, are independent of everything else, is that right? They're kind of like their own entity, their own business?
Yes.
That's what I thought, okay. Yeah, but Wendy probably knows the answer too, yep.
That's the plan anyway. Well, in that case, that was the only questions on the claims. So would someone like to make a motion to approve tonight's claims in the amount of 122,677,31 with a correction in the distribution of payment to Ferguson Water Works?
I'll make a motion on what you just said.
Thank you. Are you seconding it?
I'll have to second, okay.
We have a motion and a second to approve tonight's claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Just a clarification, so then Ferguson's going to be paid out of ARPA then, is that what?
Yeah.
Are the motions, okay. Unanimous.
Clerk's report. Okay, stated that when you came into the office today, you asked about the claims for 26, 23 for June's claims. And we talked to Keystone, and Keystone said, in order for that to be corrected, we reprinted the claims report with the correct amount. This is showing you everything that was taken out of that, and the total is 75,607,94 with those Amazon purchases and other purchases that were there. So all it would have to do is the motion to accept.
And what was the first amount?
The first amount was 6,000, I mean, $65,531.61.
65 what? Okay, what happened was the those claims don't add up to $1,100.
It's $11,000.
Okay, they don't add up to $11,000. All you added was the Amazon claims?
I added all the claims that were not on there previously.
Oh, there was more than the Amazon?
Yes.
Okay. You did find more. Somehow, all the claims were not listed on this one claim docket from June 23rd. And the way it got discovered in a roundabout way, we had two workshop meetings in the meeting room at the town hall. And Joe and I both noticed that there was two desks in another box sitting on the police department wall. And two boxes with desks and a box that is a chair. And I texted Jeff and I said, I asked him what the furniture was. He said, it's not mine, it's the clerk's office. So we were hunting for the claim that we paid, that we approved for office furniture, and we could not find it. That's how all this got discovered. In the meantime, we, I discovered there were other missing claim numbers. So we need to re-approve the claim docket. It had a little bit over $10,000 of missing claims. Is this the only one that's affected?
Yes. From, um, and I would like to go back on that, the reason why they were not on the claims docket is because when Baker Tilly came in to do bank reconciliation, we were unaware that those claims didn't pass over onto the claims report. Wasn't that we were trying to mislead anyone, they just didn't get transferred over. He showed us how to transfer them over to the claims docket, and that was the reason why they were left off.
So what's your pleasure on the corrective claim?
I think she just gave you an explanation.
I know she did, but someone's got to make, make a motion to accept this or a motion.
Well, I got a question, I mean, what are we accepting it for? I mean, what do we, I don't want to say them first, huh? I want to say it first.
And while we're on that, while we're on that, that one's clear, that he got it on, right there. Oh, here, it goes like this.
That one's clear.
I would personally like to suggest that we limit spending to essentials only at the present time. I don't know why we needed office furniture that has been sitting in boxes for nearly three months. I don't know, I mean, I'm sorry, I don't know why we needed to do that. I might be Evelyn, but we are, we're trying to bring the electric utility back up and and then we have extra expenses that we didn't need to make, and I know at least one quarter of that should have come out of the electric utility.
No, it came out of my office supplies, clerk's supplies, that's what it came out of.
Well, and it's not even a supply, it's more like a capital item. But I, I don't see the purpose of spending that, that way. I don't, I don't know, I don't know what to say. I can see where we need essential supplies, but I don't think we need extras until we really know where we're at, especially with budget items and things of that nature, and.
I'm really trying to get an understanding, because you're telling, you're talking about essentials. And we also have ordinance that you cannot spend over $500 without permission of the board, and on a daily basis. And on a daily basis, I get things coming into my office. I had signs that I paid eight thousand dollars for signs that were not brought before the board. But it got paid for and you didn't question that.
What kind of signs?
They were signs to go out on the Boulevard. All these different signs that they ordered to change to the signs. So they didn't come up before the board. I get different things that come in from utilities, such as the hydrants that come up over five hundred dollars. And they're supposed to come up before you to get approved. And they do not. I get so many different things coming from utilities that are over five hundred dollars. Those desks and that chair did not average up to five hundred dollars.
Is that all that you have to order, period?
The only other thing that I'm doing back in that office is getting it painted.
I just...
It goes back to the essentials.
I just, yeah, I mean, the fire hydrants were probably essential. Anything for the ARPA grant is essential.
That wasn't for the ARPA grant. You just made it for the ARPA grant just now.
I know. So that was not for... No, but I mean...
First off, it comes from Marshall. It's the Marshall Department. It's on his budget. So he spends what he has to spend. Okay, he can spend what he needs to do because it gives him a show of report when he does anyway.
Right, but I know Jeff is trying to save up money in other categories because he wants to fund another officer. So I think Jeff is probably only spending on essentials. And his lit money is only for certain purposes. Yes, Mark?
I can shed the lights on the street signs too. I had asked Randy to order whatever you guys wanted that matched the rest of the town were out there. So the writing was the same, the color was the same, the height was the same, whatever it might be. And then as soon as I get a bill, I'll write you a check. And I've done that many times for Transformers or whatever it might be. And so I don't know how that works in terms...
So we're just advancing you the money?
Well, he's ordering it from the company that he deals with so that they match everything else, so that you have the same parts, just like the hydrants. You guys like a Kennedy fire hydrant out here. Mueller gets used almost every place else. You guys like Kennedy. And because you have the same parts, okay? I've got three Mueller fire hydrants that I bought when you were town clerk. They're still sitting there. I'm trying not to use them because you guys like Kennedy.
They like Kennedy now.
Well, you know, and so that's how the signs came up. I don't know how that works and I'm not trying to get in the middle of it. But if you guys give me a bill for whatever it is that they order, I bring you a check. So it's not out of your account very long and it's just, I, I feel like it's simplicity so that it's done the way the town wants it. It's an advantage to me because I don't have to order them. But the biggest thing is, is so that it matches the rest of what the town wants.
What did we just say on it before too? Because the biggest complaint was that he wasn't paying the taxes on it, right?
That was, yeah, Malaika brought that up. And I thought we were talking about maybe an ordinance or something. That was in this...
So it did come up at your last meeting in the discussion, if I recall correctly. Was it, they were going to talk with you, Mark? About rather than the town ordering it, working with you so it comes through you as the first point? And Randy telling you what the specifications are?
And I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I think that was the discussion at the last meeting.
I, I know it got brought up about sales tax. And my, my thing to him was, if I'm buying it anyways, I'm not going to pay the sales tax on it because on the sales tax form, I'm going to check the box that says government use, government entity. Because if I put something in and say the water main that I'm putting in, I'm giving it to the town. So I don't pay the sales tax on it because it goes to the town. Now, the pipe I ordered, no big deal, you know, C nine hundred pipe, no problem, I get it. But when it gets down to something that's a bit more specific, if, if you guys want to give me what it is, that's fine. But on the street signs, I just felt like you guys get what you're comfortable with and give you the bill and I'll write you the check.
Is that all right, Amber? I mean, the way he's talking?
It's technically done in reverse is what it should be.
He should pay for it and then order it?
Correct, correct. It just, but we work with him. So it should technically be our, our guys working with him to meet our standards before we take it into our inventory. So that was the discussion at the last meeting.
That he pays and then we order.
Yeah, and another thing with Mark, I mean, Mark and all, Mark together with all the guys out there and they decided to go ahead and run all new water, or the water mains out there instead of trying to use the old ones too. So Mark is coming through and putting all new water mains in the subdivision back there with new taps. So that he's not tapped into our water lines, so.
I know this is odd compared to the way it's done in a lot of places. But I, I want everybody up there to be comfortable with. Nobody's got more to lose here than I do. And the last thing I want to do is something incorrectly or that looks, you know, like it isn't up and up. I work with the guys, hey, what do you need, what do you want, how you want me to do it? Because they're the inspectors, you know, they're the ones that are, got to work with it. So you tell me how you want it done and that's the way we do it.
Well, if we could do the, if we could do the part where they get together and he's paying up front like she's saying, then there's true, we have a problem with it initially.
I was just telling you about the signs.
Well, yeah.
So you know why that came up.
Pay taxes anyways.
The signs I can understand too because we're going to have...
Negative numbers, not positive numbers. Also, Malaika, on the minutes, just one thing I forgot to mention. Point one on your report, those numbers need to have a sign in front of them. Okay.
Okay, next on my list is that I had...
Oh, wait a minute, no one's made a motion to reapprove the June twenty-twenty-five claims docket.
Oh.
I made the motion, but there's not a second on it.
And where did it go? We got to sign it wherever it went.
That's there.
Right there.
That's what you're, because I was looking at it.
Who made the motion?
Lori. I made the motion.
Does anyone want to second the motion to approve that claim docket that's redone from June?
Nobody wants to.
Okay, all right. Died from lack of a second, just put it with that bundle and save it.
The next one is that I had a couple of people come in that are, there are two houses on Melvern that have no gas connection. They have propane tanks as gas. And I don't know that that is appropriate for the town of Kings for Heights. They have propane tanks.
Marshall.
I'll let Mark handle this one. And I can shed light on that also. That's our friends from NIPSCO. That section of line has not been put in yet, the natural gas. Those two houses got sold and people were living in them. Evenings are getting down to forty-seven. So NIPSCO has told me that the contractor that's doing the gas main extension in the back here has been given the approval to go over there, hook that up when they get done. As long as, you know, it fits in their schedule. And I've taken the contractors over there, showed them that work, asked them to try to put it in their schedule like that. I have no control over NIPSCO or the contractor doing the work. But if things go as expected, they thought they would be done at the end of this week with the gas main in the back. Might take a day or two next week to charge it. And then hopefully go there and run that extension. I don't think they'll be there more than two or three weeks. But I cannot guarantee that because it's not in my control. That's the way I...
I spoke to the guy, it's, what's his name? The younger guy that's taking over now?
Aye.
I can't remember his name anyway, but it was just a temporary, right? It was a temporary hookup, like he's saying, so that the people could get into their house with the weather changing so. But he told me it shouldn't be there longer than two or three weeks, so.
And I'm assuming there's still fuel oil tanks in the town too. I don't think there's an ordinance that says anything about propane tanks.
I don't think so either. I, I mean, that's how the town was ran too, with gas tanks like that, so.
I know.
Nobody's ever said...
We don't like it, trust me. We prefer, it's added expense to change the orifices and all that to be able to run propane instead of natural gas. But it, just so you guys know, it has taken me eight months to get gas main ran in the back. I called in in December of last year to get that ordered. That's how far things are.
It shouldn't be there that long anyways.
Okay, the next thing is removal of branches.
I got what you heard.
Through the utilities. I'm getting calls numerous times that they're not removing the branches. I've been told they get them at the first of the month. And people have had branches in front of their house for over a couple of months, so. That's what I'm getting calls for.
I've seen them out there for about a month now, but the guys are pretty busy right now too, so I'm sure they're going to get to them whenever they can. And Randy and them guys do pretty well, stick with the first of the month. I mean, everybody knows that's just about when they pick them up. And when they put them out there, then they're just going to have to sit there until somebody can get to them. But they have been pretty busy. They're hooking up water taps all over the place, sewer lines, so.
We can save a couple of these questions and Randy hopefully will be at the next meeting too.
Well, Randy can be told tomorrow too. I mean, I can, I can see Randy, just tell him it's time to get it picked up. If you've got a quicker time you can get them, but then you got them under a schedule.
And we've had questions about solar panels. People want solar panels on their house. I don't know if there's an ordinance against solar panels. I don't know anything about rebates for solar panels. I don't, and they're asking questions about that, so I'm throwing it at y'all.
Well, the rebates... People with solar panels on their houses already.
The rebates are either federal and/or state taxes, they're not anything we do.
Well, I didn't know if they can have solar panels here or I don't know, nothing.
They can. Anybody can have solar panels in their house. I mean, it's not up to us to say if they can or not.
It's something they put on their house.
Well, sure, I know.
They can't put up a windmill.
No. It would, it would take somebody like, you know, Mark having a subdivision with a, with a covenants or something that says that you can't have them. But as far as in the town, there's no way to stop that. I mean, anybody's trying to save energy.
Now, do you have that, Mark?
I do not have it in my...
Because there's new homeowners that are asking, so that's the thing about it. I don't have any clue, so that's why I'm bringing it to you guys.
Well, I'm already working with them, people on the permits and everything. We've been emailing back and forth. So when the time comes up, I'll let you know for sure what's happening. You'll see a permit coming forward.
Okay, and the next thing on the list is deposits for homeowners. This is the question that's before the board. Do homeowners, landlords, have to have a deposit on their house?
For what?
For their, um, the, we have a transfer fee and they have to do a deposit of two ninety-one. So do the landlords have to have a deposit on their house?
Landlords usually have the hundred dollar deposit.
Landlords have a deposit. If the landlord's tenant moves out and they don't have a deposit, the utilities are shut off. If the landlords have a deposit, then it can be transferred into the landlord's name.
Okay, but...
They're supposed to have a hundred dollars for that.
So, but for each house that they own, are they supposed to have a deposit?
As long as they keep their bills current, they have a landlord deposit.
No, what I'm saying is, you have landlords that have five or six houses.
Yes.
Do they have to have a deposit on each house?
Not as long as they keep them current.
Yes, one hundred dollars.
On each house?
One hundred dollars for each house.
Okay, that, that got changed before it was just one.
But isn't it the tenant?
Well, this is the problem. We have a young lady that has five houses. And according to what we were told, she has to have a deposit on her house. Then the rental person has to have a deposit. Because if they leave, then that is where the forty-one dollars is non-refundable. Two fifty goes towards a bill if they have a bill when they leave. Then the house gets turned back into the landlord's. And they don't receive that money back until they sell the house. So that's why I'm asking whether they are supposed to have a deposit on a house.
I think there's a statute that says we can only do it with the tenants. Let me get you that statute.
There is a hundred dollar deposit though, because I got a couple of them.
Yeah, there's a hundred because I was a clerk at that time.
But it almost sounds like it's two deposits. It is two deposits.
But that was to prevent the landlord from having to come in instantly when their tenant moved out. The utilities could just be switched over.
Yep, that's what's for.
And didn't we put it on the landlord so that if the tenant left?
And it was winter time and the tenant...
It was still a count, I think that, I remember that.
That's what it's for, yeah.
The statute that changed a few years ago. I'll get it to you. Let me get it to you.
All right.
It's relevant. I'll get it to you.
Because we have a young lady that's coming in and she wants to see the ordinance.
Well, nobody's trying to make her pay the double deposit, are we?
We're not making her pay a double deposit, we're making her pay the deposit on the house. She just bought another house. She has five houses in Kings for Heights.
And then she needs to pay the hundred dollar deposit.
And she said that she didn't have to pay the deposit.
Why?
She said that when she came and Rosalie was the clerk, Rosalie did not make her pay the deposit for the other houses.
That's because back then, that's what we did.
Well, I'm just saying, Jeannie Reed came the other day, she bought a new house. We told her she had to put a deposit down. She said she wanted to see the ordinance. It says that she has to pay the deposit.
I don't think there was an ordinance, it was just to, it was to benefit the the person that owned the house to make sure as long as it freezes.
I don't know if it was in an ordinance or not, because we had non-recurring charges too. And that chart's gone too.
Yeah, so I think it was just to save the landlord from making sure his pipes don't freeze like we're stuck in when they move out.
And last one on the list, the hours on Wednesday, just this week only, will be from six AM to four because we have Riddy coming in to do some work with the water meters. And they're coming in at eight-thirty, so I have to be there at eight-thirty.
Okay.
Our meeting's at ten o'clock.
Our meeting is at ten o'clock on, our workshop's at ten. Okay. Anybody got questions for Malaika? Malaika, um, do you have a different fund report with investments for us?
No, I don't.
Okay, I'm going to pass this down to you for a second. Where I have the arrow at the top, there's no revenue for the entire month. So that needs updated.
Okay.
And did anybody want to discuss the purchasing restrictions or are we going to...
I know we do need to, we do need to talk about that. Let's put a, let's put a restriction on it until we get, until we get all our paperwork together. And that was more or less of the essential. I made a motion on that anyway, didn't I?
I don't know.
Did I need a second? No?
I don't think you made a motion, yeah. Essential purchasing on my... Is that what you want to call it?
Yeah.
And what do you categorize, categorize essentials? Like what? Essential what?
What is necessary for us to run the town and start as the workers and things?
Repair parts, gasoline, utilities, obviously. It's essential that Malaika pay insurance premiums, everything that's associated with payroll. Just not equipment type stuff?
I don't need paper.
Paper?
No paper, no pen.
Paper and pens are essential.
I need to make sure that...
Ten cases of paper is probably not essential. I mean, you're the one who brought up how they buy their water. Okay.
And they still do it. So if we're going to go essential, that's the same way they do the water. They go down to Cane's and they pay for the water at Cane's.
But just, I think everybody should know what's essential and what's not.
I think I know.
If there's a question, they can call Joe, Dwayne, me, Evelyn, Lori and say, do you think this is essential? Okay, don't call Evelyn. Okay, don't call Evelyn. But, you know, if.
It's either that or we, we do a spending freeze and we only spend money that way. We could, we could either go either way. We could either put a freeze on spending like that we did before. And then everybody, anything that anybody needs, they have to come in front of us.
I, I think the ARPA money is essential. We approved what to buy for that and that is now an essential spending.
Sure.
And we approved the hydrants get switched to that.
Well, then you need to make sure that you tell the utilities that when they go to Menards or when they go to Caidman's or they go to any place that they go and spend money, Napa Auto, all of that, that it's only essential that they purchase that stuff.
I think you should give them a copy of the minutes.
Well.
Highlight it.
The workers know what essentials are.
Okay.
All right, now what do we need to do with that?
Oh, you made the motion.
I thought you wanted a motion.
You made the motion. Did anybody second that?
No.
Lori seconded it. We have a motion and a second to limit purchasing to things that are only essential, temporarily until further notice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four to one. Evelyn's opposed. Thank you.
Oh, you had one other thing.
No.
That was sent to me right before I left. And this is the authorization to proceed for the, um, ADA, the compliance for pavement.
Well. We are negative in the professional services appropriation in local road and street by $30 and this project costs $25,000. We would have to do a, a resolution to reappropriate money within the local road and street budget and take away from our paving budget. I mean, that's not saying it's impossible, but right now it's not in the right place. We have $56,000 in our infrastructure, which is paving and that fund, and we have cash to cover it. So I'll read this to you guys, more or less. Project fee $25,000. End that submission and plan adoption by April 1 next year. And this is the ADA plan that we have to have done to go with the street project. They will evaluate and facilitate audits of the following: Town Hall, the community center, the fire department, the PACT parts, and the ADA ramps and sidewalks. Identify and prioritize, um, the schedule and cost estimates for burial removal. Update the ADA policy, the grievance or complaint forms and procedures. Resolution assistance, website accessibility, compliance review. Post a copy of the assurance, the plan, and the required forms on the website and conduct one public meeting outreach and final adoption of the transition plan. And this is to do the Title VI Implementation Plan Update. Do you have a second copy of this? Okay, Amber, review this and make a recommendation at the next town council meeting.
So one of the things we've been discussing is Randy reaching out, the last engineer who did this plan. We were told the plan was not, um, sufficient. I can't remember what they said those were on, but do you remember?
I don't know.
Randy will tell you. Because if we had a plan, it might be easy just to simply amend it versus starting all over, is what I'm trying to avoid is a cost free, guys.
I don't remember if it was the lady from the company or if it was Randy or.
No, it was the engineer before that, Mr. Vincent. Wasn't that his firm, Joe?
Yeah.
Check with Randy tomorrow.
Okay.
I gave, I gave you that one. Okay, we've overdone that other thing, okay. Ordinance, 2025-009. This is the third reading by title only. Ordinance setting forth procedures for public comments at town council meetings.
I'll make a motion that we move on just with the third reading by title only for the setting forth of the public comments at the town council meetings.
Dwayne seconded it. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance number 2025-009 on its third and final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Are you voting? Four to one. All right. Any resolutions? All business. There is none, aye. All business, Mark. Oh, I knew that was you.
I'm sorry. Uh, I've got some drawings on the table there that, uh, show the next 20 lots that we're trying to get, uh, approved so that I can get it recorded. Uh, basically the same thing that, uh, we've done in the past. Nothing out of the ordinary. I hope it's self-explanatory when you take a look at it. I'll need everybody's, uh, signature on it and then tomorrow I'll stop in at the town hall and the clerk can notarize it for me if she would, like she did the last time.
Can you get a copy of the prints for me?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that way I can keep track of what you're, where you're headed out down.
Yeah, no problem at all.
Now, you're just going down Kennelworth and, uh.
Yeah, Large Bear and Kennelworth.
Yeah.
The next block south.
Yeah.
And then it'll go just on the Kennelworth side, another seven, total 20 lots.
The sewer plant.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So that's extending on the 20 that you did earlier this spring?
Yes, ma'am.
Don't man me.
Sorry. I'll tell you a little story if you want. I did that one time, get a load of stone one time and the lady got mad. It was through a speaker system. She said, I said, don't you tell me, mammy. I was 25 years old, I thought I was being polite, she did not like that. Sorry.
Just makes you feel old.
I don't do it that, I do it as respect, not as a.
I know.
Yeah, right now he's right over here.
Take a look at the front this way. Because this is down here.
Yeah.
If you look at the other sheet, Joe, the one underneath that, it'll show you the ones that are already, um.
On headboard?
Yeah, 209, 248, 65, I think.
He's here and he's coming around this way in Kennelworth here. This is where they ran all your, uh, gas lines.
Gas mains. Actually, the gas mains go all the way over to the mini storage, connecting that gas main there to the one that was on Large Bear.
Yeah, the one you had put in before.
Mm-hmm.
How many they doing these?
There's 20 on that sheet.
We have a road named Norfolk.
Yeah, it stops, Kennelworth stops, uh, I think this is called Jackson Street. This is the one that comes in from Ronnie Cooper's house.
Oh, okay.
That one comes up through and stuck dead end right into this one to Norfolk, goes that way, Kennelworth is that way.
Every one of those roads split in the middle.
Yeah.
Just like they did at the boulevard.
Ivanhoe and all that, yeah.
Okay.
We're using the same streets that signed their names that were here before.
Did we make a motion on this or just? Go ahead.
I'll make a motion.
You'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to move on with the Parkmans place to.
I think the motion would be to.
Base three, sorry, base, no, base.
Except the plot or what?
Accept the plat map for the next 20 houses?
Yes.
Is there a second? I'll second. Moved in second and that we accept the next 20 houses plat map form from Mark Parkman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Don't leave without signing the max.
Thank you.
New business.
We're selling old business.
Oh, old business, yes.
Mark, do we need to sign these papers up here or what?
Yeah, there's a place there for town council. I think there's a place for the presidents.
I've been talking with Jeff and Anna both about ordinances and stuff like that and there's no, no repercussion for people that don't pay their fines. He has nothing to fall back on, like the chicken ordinance, the dog ordinance, the RV camper ordinance. They can write all the tickets they want to, but we need to ferret what we can do to collect this money, where we can go if they don't pay it. Otherwise, he's writing, they're writing tickets and ordinances and stuff and nothing's, if they don't pay their 25 dollars or whatever, they don't pay it. So one of the things that you guys adopted a few months ago, um, was utilizing the TRX program for collections. So that's one way that you could collect the debt is run it through there.
Okay.
That's an option.
What is that?
What is that?
The TRX program, it's a, it's a debt, debt collection, um.
That was more adopted for utilities, but you could use it for fines.
You can use it for that. Yes, you can.
Can we, is small claims court still an option?
It's an option.
And then they get, they get sent a certified letter and they get told what the court costs would be too, because they would be responsible for the court costs.
It's an option.
Would the trust be cheaper?
There's more effort to it.
Yeah.
But.
Is the trust better or be cheaper on the town because once you go through the small claims, you have to pay $90 and your tickets only what?
Correct.
25 or something.
That's why I was thinking that could be the easier option for you guys. Now, if there's a violation of real property, I gave you all the forms that you could, um, if the town takes action on it, go back and collect it as a lien against the property, but it has to be an ordinance violation involving real property. Remember I sent you all those forms?
Me?
Yeah.
I would have to go back and look.
Okay, yeah, I sent them all. So again, so if there's an ordinance violation involving real property, I don't know, junk laying around, right? So ordinance says don't leave junk laying around or something and a town employee has to go in and clean it up after giving them notice and opportunity to evade it and they don't, so then we could go and bill them and collect our time going on that property. And if they don't pay it, then we can impose it as a lien against the property, assuming we gave them the right notice forms.
And the.
So that's another option.
The notice to abate to begin with would have had a, been certified now too, right?
Um, it, it should be, it should be. So you have a record on it? It should be.
Okay.
We stole an old business.
Yes.
I want to know what happened to the benches in the circle.
Oh.
I get it. I'd like to make a part to that. This and I didn't steal them. The benches in my yard.
No.
Are picnic tables.
Did anybody say you stole them? I'm asking.
Well, anyone who's in the room is is on face.
It was.
And that insinuated.
They was throwing away.
Yeah.
They were, I talked to Randy and he said they were wood rot, they were falling apart. If someone sat on them, they might, they would almost collapse.
People were sitting on them every day. There's two guys that sat on those benches every day in the circle. They were a gift. A gift cannot be taken back. Is that right, Amber?
The only thing I can tell you, if the town employees deem it to be dangerous, because I've had to deal with liability for park benches collapsing and injuries that have occurred because of it, that's the only thing I would tell you. But you're right, once it's a gift, it becomes town property.
It's right out there in a burn pile. I took pictures of it. I mean, uh.
Guess you had them burned, right?
I didn't have them burned, they're still sitting out there in the pile.
So Randy just took them back on his own to go out and burn them up?
Well, the workers did and one of the workers picked them up. I don't know who picked them up.
So the, the proper thing would have been just to come to the town and say, I want to dispose of this property. So that there was a record of it and the reason why. So in the future, so that there aren't those accusations, what I would inform the departments, just, just come to the board and declare it to be useless, valueless, need of disposal. So there's no question.
And I don't even know if they were ever added to the, the inventory to begin with because they would, the value was probably under the limit. I still.
With regard to what Lori was talking about also, there, there seems to be some, over the last couple of weeks, I've had, I've been getting complaints with regards to the RV. So with regards to the RV, there is no town ordinance that says somebody can't live in an RV. However, there is a building code that says you have to have sewage, you have to have water, you have to have electricity, all this stuff. So I've been talking with Lori today, I, I don't know if you guys can do this, make an ordinance with regards to no one living in RVs here.
Or tents.
Or tents.
Or camp, anything like that, because there was, um, was it two doors down from me? Yeah.
Which way?
No, three doors down. On the backside of it, there was a camper pulled in there and they ran electric from the lady's house on Exeter over into there. So I called Anna and said, hey, I think there's somebody living in a camper and I'm pretty sure that's not okay. So they did some digging and they found, luckily, we were saved by that code that they found.
Really cold ordinance.
Yes, that had them go down and talk. They have no water there, they have no, um, they have electric, but the lady on that side is paying that bill and they have no sewage, no water, nothing like that. So Jeff went and talked to the lady and said, well, how are you going to the bathroom? She goes, oh, I'm not. And he goes, I go 15 times a day and you're not going at least once a night camper? Well, then my husband went down and took pictures and there's a garbage bag hooked up underneath where the sewage comes out. So they are going and it's going into a garbage bag. So we need to make an ordinance that they can't, you know, it's fine.
We need an ordinance and someone needs to call the health department.
Well, there, she's got it up for sale now, the lady does, but they need to like, if everyone had family come in and they wanted to park their RV there for a couple of weeks to visit, that's one thing.
Right.
But.
And we've had people do that.
Yes, we have.
Mark?
I remember trying to get a couple single whites put in here and was told that if it didn't have a permitted foundation, it couldn't be here, so I don't know if that supersedes your ordinance.
But you mean for good?
Well, it just said it had, if anything that was livable, it had a permitted foundation. So I don't know if that would.
And I think that's, someone asked me and I. And I think that's, someone asked me, and I said, "It's got to have a permanent foundation."
Yeah, the lady told Jeff that you told him he could do it, she could do it. And I'm like, "Oh, okay."
I did not. In fact, my comment was about, number one, a foundation, and number two, see Joe, he's the building inspector.
Yeah, well...
So he did get a permit, and he told me I got a permit for it from Joe. He's got a permit for a fence.
Not anything else.
He didn't get a permit for water and electric?
Nope.
No, he just got a fence. And he wasn't the one that purchased a permit. I mean, Steve Carl did grant him, so I don't know.
But I think at some point, I think that there's some things that the ordinances need to be updated, looked at. I mean, we've got ordinances from the fifties, from the seventies, from the nineties.
We do.
I mean, but...
I have some at home.
I think, I think over time, I think that would be...
We just have Amber make us a lot of...
Like, I don't want to reveal all my ordinances. Guys may at some point want to think about it, though. In any event, I can do an ordinance clarification, but it sounds like there might be...
The last time they tried to have someone recodify the ordinances, they never adopted the book, because there were so many mistakes in it.
Gotcha. But there's probably ordinances for everything, but God only knows where they're at.
People pretty well do what they're told when it comes to that situation anyway.
They're still not wanting to get rid of their chickens and their ducks, but he can give them a ticket, he can show them the ordinance, write them a warning, and then give them a ticket, and they can go, "Oh, okay, well, we're not paying that." And we can't do anything about it. We've got to figure out something we can do about it. Or he's wasting his time, we're wasting his time.
I think one thing that would help out a lot, especially the income of the... The new people moving into town, it may be a welcome package. You know, here's your... Here are your top ten ordinances that we look at. Tuesdays is garbage day. The number for the town hall is this. Something that they can give to each and every individual that, you know, who's in the town. That way, everybody's aware that there's no chickens allowed, there's no parking RVs and living in a... Yeah, I mean, it's...
Well, the ordinance was fine, but like you said, if you can't, I mean...
Leica's going to be the secretary.
Well, but I think they want a little extreme on that ordinance. Saying you can't have zebras, you can't have bears, yeah.
Oh, zebras was not on the list.
Oh, zebras wasn't on that list, that's right. You can have zebras, but you can't have a bear. You can't have a pig, you can't have a cow. It just wants a little... You're not given one, not if it's not a good surprise, it's not happening.
Okay.
But I just think we need to update that.
We do.
Maybe with a revision that's about that, like certain exceptions, like if they're visiting for a couple of weeks, something like that would be okay.
I can put something together about RVs. But I think you're talking about a bigger global topic too.
Yeah.
Is that the end of old business? Is that the end of old business? Do you have any more old business?
No.
Did you?
No.
Oh, okay. You?
Yeah.
Okay, we're on to new business. Any new business? We're on to attorney's report.
Um, just your garbage contract. Leica, do you need me to send that to the gentleman for signature? Or do you have to email the center to him?
I have the email.
Okay. Can you send that? Or did you? I just don't want to...
I had not gave it to you.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
That's the only thing I had.
Back to old business, Lori forgot or anything.
Dirt bikes. Are we going to allow them? Are we not going to allow them? Jeff has looked for an ordinance, no dirt bikes, no four-wheelers, and he can't find one.
Yeah, but listen, if there are dirt bikes that is on the street, Jeff should be able to tickle them.
Correct, right? The issue though is they're riding around on their properties. So if they're riding around on their property, there's nothing that says they can't do that.
Well...
The only thing is, if it's loud enough, I've got neighbors complaining about it being loud. So that's the only recourse I have.
I see a lot of them on the streets. There's a few of them out there.
Trust me, if they're on the street, then I can deal with them.
But you got to catch them.
If I catch them.
Yeah, you got to catch them.
By the time you get there...
They're gone.
They're gone.
Yep.
And then saying that dirt bike is like... He doesn't catch them. That's his land, right?
Some of these kids are really running the stop signs. And I see it going down to Large Bear, but... If you call someone, they're gone by the time the officer from the insurance department or our police department can even get there. And our police department is only a few blocks away.
And then we wrote up that letter, Leica, I don't know if you recall, about animal control officer assisting, how us taxpayers pay money for La Porte County.
Oh, yes.
Did that ever get sent?
It did get sent. I signed it. You wrote it, I signed it.
I sent it.
And we don't have...
You guys weren't going to respond?
No.
Okay, I just, because we're paying money for them, and we are in La Porte County and they're La Porte County Animal Control, so the people have a right to know why they won't come out and assist and take some of these animals into town.
Do you want to double check, or do you want?
They come to Westville.
They went to the commissioners, right? I can reach out to their secretary and see if they're going to respond.
Did it go straight to commissioners, or did it go to the shelter?
Mark, before county...
I believe we sent it to the commissioner.
Come to Westville. Mark says they go to Westville.
They go to Westville. Why can't they come on here?
You know, I did see something about cats too. I mean, there's a lot of people complaining about all the cats running around.
There is, but we don't have any ordinance on cats, and cats can't really be caught, and...
They're a peril animal.
Yeah, that's been a forever problem, literally.
There's a way back in the seventies.
So with like, refers to the animal shelter. So I captured a chicken. What am I supposed to do with it? I mean, I'm being serious here. I mean, or a cat or a dog, what am I supposed to do with it?
Oh, we can take them there. They won't come out and help us.
No, they will not take them.
Oh, they won't take them either?
If the police department takes them, they won't take them from him. One of, a person out here, that's what they told him.
A citizen. They wouldn't even take it from a citizen. The citizen brought kittens, and they wouldn't take them. She brought them back out here for Anna.
And Anna took them.
And Anna took them to the city.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's our dilemma, especially with regards to...
I mean, I'll reach out to the secretary and see if they're going to issue a response. Can we go to a county commissioner meeting and get on board and...
Yeah.
Absolutely. Let's go. I'm game. I know when their meetings are. We'll go and tell them we want on the agenda. Because it kind of puts them in a spot if we're telling them to go...
Yeah, it does. I agree.
If we're telling them to take care of the chickens and the ducks and whatever, then what's he supposed to do with them? Stick them in a cage or just let them sit up there and die?
Dinner.
Yeah, no.
Dinner? Is that what you said?
There's plenty of them out there, though. A lot of people got chickens in this town in...
And it's to feed their families.
Ducks.
Ducks.
Yeah.
Two things to consider, I guess.
So I think that ordinance will have to be...
You catch them, bring them home, come by here, my dog gets them home.
No, we figured a copy of the redone one, or they found the one from twenty eighteen?
Yeah, but do we need to read? I mean, it's kind of...
It's pretty complete.
Okay.
The animal, the animal one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and it says that the animal control officer from La Porte County will come out to assist, and then they will take them, but we don't deal with them anymore right now, so...
All right, so maybe part of it needs reading. But the list of the animals is pretty complete.
Okay.
Okay. Did you have a report?
I just wanted to figure out who was sending the garbage contract. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Okay. Does anyone have any public comments?
I have a question. On Ivanhoe, I turned on Ivanhoe, and as I was going down the street, there was a strong sewer smell. And then when I got a little bit where it turns into melbourne, it got even stronger. And I just wondered if there was anything going on.
So you're talking about when you come off of the road by the park and turn onto Ivanhoe right there?
Very strong sewer smell.
Would you have Randy, give Randy an AVO to check that, please?
Because actually, my sister-in-law, I think her address is two sixty-one Ivanhoe, she's got something black that comes up in her bathtub whenever the smell is really strong. But I personally was riding and smelled it in both places.
Has your sister-in-law ever called down here and reported it?
Well, I think she called and reported when it backed up a while back, but it just backed up a little bit the last time, like, in the last week. So no, she didn't call down here.
She said...
Then, but she's called down previously about... And had somebody come out.
Two sixty-one, you said?
I believe it's two sixty-one. She had a plumber come out and go into Ohana. She had him come out and go under the house to make sure nothing was, you know, going on on their property.
Right.
But they smell it too.
It sounds like...
I just had a question.
Is there a mental problem or something?
Because I'm going to call, or I'll wait till tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
So you don't have to worry about it.
Okay. It is seven twenty. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I do.
I would think all in favor.
Aye.